I'm going to open the Town of Halifax Planning Board on September 1st, 2022 at, what time? 7:04 PM. Thank you. I'm going to read the agenda. We have the agenda of seven appointments and hearings. 7:00 PM, Kennedy K-9 at 416 Plymouth Street for our site plan review. 7:15, Denzel D'Souza for 416R, which is rear Plymouth Street, site plan review. We have nothing listed under discussion. Bills, we have Plimpton and Halifax Express. We have two sets of meeting minutes, and we have correspondence. We have other business of 115 Rivers Street. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make the motion. So it's up.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Tonight in attendance, we have Bert Gainer, Rick Mary, and Amy Truitt. Okay, so first on the agenda tonight is Kennedy K-9.
Hello.
Hollywoods.
Yeah. So, has everybody looked over all the correspondence? Do you have anything that has changed since the last time that we've chatted that you want to inform the board of?
Well, I submitted updated site plans with most of the revisions that were asked at the previous meeting. So we marked where the borderline of the wetlands is at the rear of the property, and we marked the handicap parking space and entrance, as well as the flow of traffic and where the outdoor lighting was. And I'm also in talks with the engineer. He's getting a wildlife scientist or wetland scientist to go review the property out there for the Conservation Committee meeting.
Okay. So the Conservation hasn't approved any of this as of yet, correct?
Correct, yes. There's like a 20-day period you need to send the application in before the meeting. So the last one, it was about four days after, so I couldn't attend that meeting.
Yeah.
When's the next scheduled?
I believe the 22nd of this month or 21st.
Any comments from the board? Any questions besides that?
Have you met with any of the other tenants in the building as far as asking their opinions of what their thoughts were about going in back there? Not that it's required, I just wondered if you would have had any type of discussions with them.
I met with Tika Lynn, who has a spot in the front of the property. And she was actually really excited about it, and she was really friendly. And then, what was that?
Yeah, when was that?
A few weeks ago.
Weeks ago?
Yeah. Probably before the meetings, it was one of the last times I was there with the landlord. And then, as far as that, there is Rodney's Kitchen, but it's under new ownership, so I'm not sure.
Rodney's Kitchen, well, what was Rodney's Kitchen way down the other end?
Yeah. Yeah. But currently...
With them also?
Well, the landlord's family ran it, but now it's under different ownership, so I haven't talked to the new people yet. But the landlord hasn't, you know, mentioned any complaints or concerns from the current tenants. But there's also no other tenants on the other side where I'd be looking to set it up, at least at the moment.
Any other changes or modifications, same forty-dollar, not forty dollars, forty dogs maximum is what you're kind of thinking about?
Yes, yeah.
Same thing as far as, you know, customers bringing their dogs in the grooming area or all that?
Correct, yeah.
Everything else is...
I have decided to make like the outdoor fence area a bit smaller. I think when we had met last, I had talked about like 100 feet by 40, but now it's going to be 50 by 50. But that's really the only change.
Would that be further away from the wetlands also?
It's in the same spot, because there's no place that can get further away from the wetlands, because there's the parking lot on the other side. So, kind of wraps all the way around. That's the...
And I think we discussed also whether plans about the traffic coming in and out or anything like that.
Yeah. It should be marked on the revised site plan that I submitted.
Yeah, I don't see that as any big stumbling block by any means, but just my own person agrees, I can't get crazy. You know, traffic just goes in a regimented fashion.
Yeah.
I don't think it'd be a problem per se, but it would certainly add to the ease of coming in and out of there.
So how are you going to, now you're going to detour the traffic that way, and people just going to automatically know they got to drive around differently?
There's marked signage on the site plan. Proposed signs, there's one on each side of the building.
Pretty hard to see this thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Usually we... My bad, sorry.
These are the modified ones here?
Yeah, this is revised.
Thank you.
Rick, do you want your own, or are you going to share?
Yeah, we can share, we have that much more stuff on there.
And so the wetlands, you said, haven't even been flagged yet, is that what you stated?
Well, no, they're marked on there.
Like, but a flagger hasn't come out?
Oh, correct, not yet, not at this time.
So I don't know how we actually have a real one without flagging.
It said the last time it was done, I think it's dated on there.
Yeah, it said 2021. It was flagged out in 21, according to this.
Yeah, but they've done a lot of changes back there that haven't been okayed by Conservation, and this still isn't a full site plan.
Changes like what?
Well, it didn't change anything here.
Oh, you mean over on this side?
Over this side.
Oh, oh, oh.
Didn't change anything where he's...
They've removed trees from here, here, all the way back, and there was stumping going on today, or yesterday, rather.
Up behind the building here?
Yep. And this was wet from when I was a kid, right out the back. As soon as they ended the paving, it was wet. So...
Well, wet doesn't mean anything, you know, they judge wetlands by the vegetation, and that's what they're showing on here.
Right, but anyways, this is, yeah, but there hasn't even been...
Where's the wetlands, mom?
This is it, this is all the, see, this is a vegetative, this is a boarding wetland here.
Oh, it's boarding?
You know, it's wetland by Michelle Greiner and two on February 7th, 21.
What's this one here?
That's overhead wires.
Thank you, rookie.
Well, we still don't have a full site plan, and like it's not, it doesn't go to the edges of the properties all the way back, or it...
But this is all he's using, it's right here.
Yeah, but on everything that we see, we see the full lots.
Like, where is it? Oh, this is...
I think, I think it's sized down because there's like 30 acres behind there.
And maybe he hasn't had the total ASBIL done yet, because I don't think he's finished all this.
This is the problem. But he still needs to prove is what he's going to do, and it hasn't even gone in front of Conservation, and this is the property, and we only see this.
But this existing building that people are already using?
And this is all vegetation from here?
But we're clearing, we're clearing for them to use things before Conservation has even been up.
We're clearing what?
This is cleared. All that care is cleared without Conservation. And so Conservation has called them in, and they haven't approved any of the shit. So I'm thinking, and no offense to you guys, the owner should be in here with a site plan, a full site plan, and gone through all of this stuff, which is what I asked for back in March or April.
Because this doesn't have, this doesn't have the wetlands marked over here.
It's not, this isn't a full site plan, and I think that the owner of the property needs to come in here. Does his name Maloney, do you know his name?
No. Maloney owned the one over here, you know, the parcel over here that they were clearing, where the old gas station...
It's all one...
This is all one.
Oh, I thought it was, oh, you're right, there's not his way right.
Here's that building out back where he wants to do the repairs.
So there's so many changes done, and we don't have a site plan, which is why I was asking for it back in March, so that we'd be prepared for any of this. And now that it's clearing done, that Conservation has called the owner forward to go, and so I don't really see how we're supposed to do anything right now without the owner going forward.
So you're saying Conservation is going to shut this whole thing down?
I have no idea.
So, in other words, he can't go ahead because the owner's doing something over here?
It's all existing in the wetlands area, and this is not where it was, this was here.
What's been the, new guy question? What's been the practice of the board?
We haven't had this problem come...
If it was contingent upon approval of Conservation, has it been, have they done that?
We don't even have a full site plan to be able to do this, we don't have...
Well, we don't need the whole site plan for what he's doing here.
Yeah, he's just leasing this. I mean, the footprint or anything like that isn't being increased. And if it was being increased, it would be the owner of the property, he wouldn't be here in front of the board. But he's just leasing a piece of property.
But this part is...
But it's not in the wet...
You're absolutely right.
And...
And this is added on.
And so is that, and that's never been rented out before, so it is all actually new stuff that hasn't been gone over and hasn't been rented out.
So like I said, even though from the last meeting says it's got to go in front of Conservation.
Right.
Because, you know, this is within, this is in the buffer zone.
And you get requested in the minutes that he's submitted, and I think it is Maloney now that you mentioned it.
But Maloney should be in here giving us a full site plan and showing us all the changes and getting it approved as a modified plan, so that he can do these things because of the new areas that are being used, which is what I was trying to prevent by making him do it in March or April of this past spring, is to prevent these issues from coming up by having it done.
Which again, has nothing to do with you, so, you know...
Yeah, it doesn't, I totally see...
You've been more than...
I mean, I can see them checking this out, make sure this is...
But it's just a problem with the landlord not doing everything that he needs to do.
Because that's the only thing he's changing, is adding.
But it was also the board's fault for not requesting this in the spring.
I think Amy has a good point too, because if this was 100 by 50, and now all of a sudden it's going to be 50 by 50...
Yeah, but it's something that it's still within the wetland buffer, so...
Yeah.
I think that we have to delay and ask for the owner of the property to come in for a modified site plan and show us.
All right, I noticed on that, how are we looking for time on this?
On this one, we have, I'm sorry, on this one, we have the extension until October 4th, and then on D'Souza, we would have to ask him for an extension as he, hold on, 30 days is 9/3, but he would be up on 9/18. We will be meeting before that, but probably to prep, because I'm sure we're going to need a site plan modification at the next meeting, right? And it stinks to do this, but that's why we should have done this in March.
So obviously, they're still doing site work there.
Without Conservation. Stumps were being pulled yesterday.
You know, in certain instances and circumstances and whatnot, you know, where it was not the owner of the property, if there were other instances, I'd say you could go forward contingent upon. But if they're clearing property, increasing the lot size, even though they're not increasing the footprint of the building or the existing, it has nothing to do with that, I'm a little hesitant about doing it contingent upon.
I am too, and I think that maybe what we should do...
Especially if they're clearing areas down here.
So is Conservation's aware of this, and they've confronted him about it?
Remember, we were asking them to come in when they were clearing out all the way to the left?
Yeah.
That was this property, and that's why I wanted them to do a full site plan with a plan.
So I did see a whole site plan showing the new septic and everything, you know, for the whole, this whole thing.
Yeah, because this was a nightmare of...
Yeah.
Do we have 416's file with us?
And the thing is, he's not the owner, Maloney's not the applicant.
No, 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 not the...
Yeah, he's just leasing, the only concern I can see is that, I mean, you know, modify Conservation, it's going to be okay there, but if they say, yeah, you're all set, you know, then I don't see a problem at all with anything.
No, no, not if it's...
Just because the owner of the building is doing all this junk.
Yeah, and it's, and like we were just saying, Amy, the bottom line, it's not the owner of the property, that's the applicant, you know, it's this poor gentleman, you know, but in the same breath too, I agree that some kind of ruling or at least a review from Conservation to say, yes, no, good, bad, and...
We don't...
And bottom line, I think it's part of the application process, we had discussed this before, I think as a board, that a full site plan is required.
Yeah.
You know, it's not something we asked for...
No, we've asked for it more than once.
Exactly.
You know.
So should we...
So how is his time doing as far as time goes?
Well, he just extended it the last meeting to...
Well, they both did?
No, so Kennedy K-9, to be clear, extended the last time, so instead, because they were going to be done on 9/4, so they're extended till 10/4, October 4th.
What was it, 3rd, okay.
And then Denzel D'Souza, he is, his 45 days are up on the 18th of September, sorry.
September.
So we still have time on his, we will meet again, hopefully have a quorum, right? So, well, not that we won't, but you know what I mean? But we're going to have to have a site, a full site plan, hopefully at our next meeting from the owner, modified, showing, and they're not even going to have Conservation until the 23rd, 2nd?
22nd, I believe, the 3rd Thursday, right?
Thanks, Joanne. This is a septic plan and not the site plan. To be fair, we don't have stormwater management on all of this either, with, you know, the next proposed mechanic shop, we need to have stormwater management, you know, done on all of this new things, because everything's different for drainage after these trees...
That's still all Conservation, stormwater is all Conservation.
Right, but so everything still has to happen so that we can have a full site plan reviewed. Because, see, this doesn't even show the front house.
No, on the expansion of the, of the expansion with the, clearly no trees.
So...
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't, this line is nothing.
And then this is different.
What is that? Well, that's just elevation, I think.
Right, because we're on a septic plan.
Yeah, you should just, a lot of this is existing, all these tanks and everything out here.
Well, are these, are these abandoned now?
Not sure, it's still, they're being used for the...
Oh, because it's, oh, because, I get it, I get it.
It's all existing, yeah, you get people in there using the bill.
It comes from here, here to here to here.
Oh, yeah, it's all grease traps, there's tanks, it's...
It's mine, I hope it's back here, okay.
This is going to have, this is going to propose line that's going to come from the mechanic shop here back to this tank, and then that just does its whole thing all the way out to here, you know.
But this, obviously, if they've done it already, this has all been pre-approved by Conservation, if it's all done and installed.
Only that part, which is not on the placewalks. Only the trees up by the car wash being taken down were approved by Conservation as of the meeting.
I mean, is this a septic, but all approved, all these meant all approved of the border health, right?
Well, I would say that would be a Bob Valerie question, is that the sign, well, we don't know.
No, this isn't, no, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have the approved plan here.
So we don't even have that? And then...
Well, this isn't an ASBIL plan, it's just a proposed plan. So obviously, they're still working on this, am I right? On all this?
I thought it was all done, to be honest with you.
That part was, and that's, after that was done and they came, and we, I wanted a full site plan, and I was the only one.
This is all, just all proposed stuff?
But I knew that in the future, this was going to come up as an issue, and that's why I wanted to be ahead of the game and make it so that it would be easier for everybody. Should I take this back?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I don't want to pay to cut it. So do you think that we need to motion that the owner of the property needs to come in with a full site plan?
I lost it, please. Let me actually, I thought I had it turned on. So there's no way of like approving what he's done here?
No, because it's involved in the Conservation area. If it wasn't, and...
Yeah, under the condition that Conservation okayes it, because Conservation hasn't done anything for you yet, right, as far as approval?
Correct. I don't even see any comments from Conservation on the septic or stormwater management, which, because the whole property has been changed, just like the one on Main Street. We all know what happened the last time that we let that go on contingency, right?
With which one?
Um, let up.
Well, that never was approved by Conservation, was it? Because they never had any stormwater management, so you stormwater manage in this Conservation, that never went to Conservation.
This is the point.
You know?
We can't do...
But everybody let it go anyway, so...
Well, we have to let history determine not to do that again.
Well, I mean, I thought we were pretty clear the last time I were asking for a full site plan review, but the only issue that I have with it, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, is that the owner, if we want to call him Mr. Maloney, I think, I believe is his name, he's not the applicant, so how can we, how can we send him a letter for, wait a minute, how can we send him a letter saying, you need to comply with the, and he's not the applicant?
In order for him to have his tenants.
Well, in order for the applicant to continue the process.
But he has existing tenants now, right?
Of course he does.
But we'd be agreeing to allow things in new areas that aren't on our site plans that haven't gone through the boards, and haven't given an agreement from Conservation, or what if they needed a variance from the zoning board, or what if they need this, or what if they need that, and none of it's been decided, because, so we'd be the only ones deciding when we'd be leaving our border health. It's not the team of people that need to make sure that this all can happen legally within all of our high laws.
Well, if Rick said it was contingent upon approval of the border health, approval of Conservation and whatnot, but I don't really feel comfortable doing that.
Because the thing I see about this, it's an existing building that's been, had, you know, stuff going on there for years.
Right.
So what are you going to, we're going to go up to the landlord now and say, hey, guess what, kick everybody out because we don't like them?
No, 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 any further extension of things because of the new changes.
But you're not really extending anything, because it has been occupied for...
They're not greasing the footprint, other than, other than that section.
And also, the outbuilding, the rear building has never been rented out, and it's part of the area that's been cleared. So it's all new.
Either, I don't know, I look at it as basically, bottom line, these are our choices, if it's a pre-existing, and even if it's a pre-existing, it is pre-existing conforming because it's been passed, but if we could approve him going in, the K-9, and exclude the area that's affected by Conservation, without Conservation approval, which is just walking area, it's not, it's not, it's not this, and he's got nothing to do with down here either, that's a whole other different application we were about to walk into, but...
But then we're opening up, because we now don't have any way that the owner's going to come in here with a full site plan.
That's right, that's absolutely right. So, bottom line, that would mean he would never get the walking area.
And then...
And he would be able to open his business and exclude that until it's approved by and reviewed by Conservation.
But then we're talking border health, or food, and...
Well, that's going to keep him...
That has to be.
What's going to keep the building owner from coming back and saying, all right, to heck with the K-9 guy, I'll just put somebody else in there without anything changing?
Well, why would he do that?
He...
Why wouldn't he come in?
I mean, that's his option, that's his, he certainly could do that.
He's extending the use because they've never rented out.
I mean, if he's in violation clearing all this land with Conservation and everything, why would he be doing that to jeopardize, you know?
Well, it's more than there that he's cleared out, and it has been cleared out way back all the way through, and it hasn't been approved, and they're getting wind of it now. They're just getting wind of it, I think it's, and the owner needs to come in here and present it, it's not the tenant's job to do his work, and if we make it contingent upon that, then we're allowing something to happen, and something that the owner hasn't come and done a new modified site plan. So for instance, when other people have modified site plans, right, we have to have them come in here and do that. So there's a modified site plan that needs to happen here, and it hasn't happened. And it's holding his ability to extend his uses out, and it is then also hindering his people that he wants to rent to. It has to be done around the, on the correct process, because we all know, once we let it happen, what happens? Isn't that what we learned? Yes.
Well, bottom line too, if it was approved by us, the application, and he did not conform the border health, then it doesn't matter who approves it, it's gone, it's done, it's, Conservation comes in and says...
Just saving him more steps I have to come back.
That's the only thing, he has nothing to do with it, you know, but he's paying the price, you know?
Is he going to want to go in there if they don't, so now we have him move in there, and then they can't ever do the walking area, then his business is what? So are we actually doing him any justice whatsoever? We can have him on the same night as the modified site plan, and they should have to do their engineering to get it into us and get it approved, so that we can go forward with any of these things, which is what I've been begging for since the spring. I have a motion to call in.
I see a point, you know?
I do.
We really, really have to run this by Conservation, if we need to add it?
It has to.
It has to.
It has.
It's within the 100...
It's unfortunate that he actually has to...
It's unfortunate to everyone, you know, but that's why this should have been done before.
And you know what, either it's a complete application or it isn't, I mean, I don't see it as any kind of gray area, no, there shouldn't be, it's either a complete application or it isn't, and this is incomplete.
Right, right.
So we need to have a motion to call in the owner of the property for a full modified site plan?
I would make, the only way I would make the motion is not to have the owner of the property, but the applicant, he's the applicant, he's the one in front of us. I don't see how we can just make somebody else come in and put something in front of us, I think...
Because the owner, the owner of the property...
Well, that's up to, the applicant, I think, has to get to the owner, look, you're holding me up, you know, you're holding me up.
Okay, I would agree.
You know, bottom, he's the applicant, you know...
So do we tell...
So we have two, we have two people here in the same book.
In the same exact book.
So, you know, somebody's got to go to them and say, hey, you know, this is, you're throwing a wrench in everything, what, you know, we got to get this straightened up.
So...
And we really can't act on an incomplete application, or at least I can, you know, and rightfully act on an application that is incomplete. And it wasn't like Mr. Truitt actually mentioned it either the last meeting, and I believe the meeting before, we need a full site plan, and I think he should be able to provide that. I don't think that's asking a whole lot, to be honest with you.
No. I've been asking... I've been asking...
And if that involves going to conservation, and going to the Board of Health and whatnot, so be it, you know, but, uh, that's where, that's how I feel about it, anyway.
Yep, I, I agree, so I think that everybody has to go to the owner of the building and state that we need a, a modified site plan that shows all the new areas with all the correct parameters that he needs to go through in order to do these new things that he's promoting to you guys, and you guys have great ideas, and we want to act on them, but we can't.
Love to have your business come into town, love to have it, in my, my opinion, but again, uh, so, unless you wanna make a motion, I would, I would make a motion then that we postpone till the next meeting, so that a complete application is provided to the board, uh, from the applicant, which, as you know, as we've discussed here, requires the owner of the property to provide the applicant with a full site plan, so that we can make a, a decision on it.
All right.
Is that, is that okay?
Um, Rick, do you second?
I'll second.
I mean, is that okay wording wise, or is that too complicated?
I think it's good, I think it's pretty good.
Okay.
And hold on, ready? We have to open to this, can we open a public comment, because we have Mrs. De Souza over here, she wants to say something, and I don't wanna... It's not the full site plan, and it hasn't gone through, correct me if I'm wrong, and add, it's only a partial site plan, it hasn't been to conservation, it hasn't had stormwater management, it hasn't had so many things, and that's what we've been asking him for since March. So...
I mean, unless you have a, a modified site plan that...
This is what we have.
No, 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 he, he might have a, a, a full site plan.
Please, Danza, please.
If it could help everybody out.
No, it's the same.
It's the same.
It's actually its last.
Yeah.
This is the septic plan that we already have, neither of them are full site plans.
That's what appears, yeah, see, the property goes all the way down, and, and...
Yes, go ahead, I'm not trying to interrupt, I'm trying to show him the property.
Yeah, see, it, it, where is it? Yes, here's the whole site, that's the whole thing, what, what both applicants have provided us with is, like, maybe this, right?
Yeah, like this.
Yeah.
Actually, what the dotted line is.
And, uh, it's, it's basically what it boils down to, it's a, an incomplete application, we, we can only, uh, we can only form a, an opinion and, and make comments on what's presented to us in front of us, and if it's incomplete, I don't know, that's just no idea.
You got a site plan of this whole area?
Yes.
Has to be a full site plan.
Because this has been cleared, this has been cleared, there's some stormwater management that needs to happen, because the trees were removed.
This area back here's been cleared, right? Isn't that where the walking area is?
Where the street is, yes, thank you.
And that's been pushed back too, so there's been a lot of changes on the property that really the board needs to see. And then, it's only helping him out too, because the board also has to see, the Conservation Commission has to see, the Board of Health has to see, and it's folding everybody up.
That's what I've been trying to say for the last couple of meetings.
And it's not your fault, as far as I go.
We don't want it to be this way. We did, we did state it, right? I know. Honestly, the owner needs to put in a full site plan and go through the process with the town. And this has been on the agenda since March, for him.
We do have to open his reason too, though, and do the same thing, but, uh...
Yes.
Well, right now, unless you wanna, are you closing discussion, you wanna vote on this?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, so I think that's where we...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry to hold you up, sir.
So, to, to be very clear, the owner needs to give a full modified site plan to all the boards of the town of Halifax.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hi. Yes, where all the, all the boards will, um, be able to look at it, conservation, border health, building, everybody. So then that way, all of the different, um, will get comments from the entire, every part of the town, so that we can make a proper decision. It's, we don't have a full site plan.
Is that, is that, um, your shop there hooked into the septic yet, did they hook that up yet? So, he, he wants you to get approved before he puts a septic into it?
Because it's the changes by the owner, not them. I think that the key to this would be that his tenants need to let him know that, that's okay, that's okay, I know, mechanic. Yeah, well, that's what happens with the engine.
No, the landlord said he, he wants approval from us before he'll do that septic, which...
That's, see, this is what I'm saying, like, that's why it's, so what needs to happen is that he needs to do a full site plan, showing all of the new areas that he's cleared, get, before he actually clears anymore, he should be going through conservation and stormwater management, and making sure that all of that is done, he needs border health approval, he needs building perm, um, building permit approvals, he, there's never been an occupancy.
The board of health approve that plan? The board of health has approved it? So according, so what you're saying...
But according to...
That, you know, the, uh, what's really holding up now is conservation, you're saying?
Well, so, when they put in a modified site plan, that'll include so many different things, and then we'll get all of the comments from the boards, so that we know that we're actually approving things correctly.
So, so the board of health approved that without a full site plan?
Well, they, the board of health approves the septic plan, that's...
Repair, it, it was done as a repair, but it should have gone to conservation for that clearing, and then now there's more clearing, and then they're gonna make a building that hasn't been rented out, rented out, and they're gonna add area where there's gonna be, you know, the walking and the dog, all that stuff, that, that's new, and none of it's been done, and they are gonna have a flagger out before the 23rd or the 22nd for the conservation meeting, and that hasn't been done. So, I mean, it's kind of a lot to put contingencies on when we don't know.
I, I agree.
So...
I agree. I think it's too much.
Thanks.
I mean, why do they have to re-flag the wetland?
They're doing it.
But why do they have to, when it was...
But they're clearing.
Yeah, well, that doesn't, that...
It doesn't change the wetland delineation, but...
If anything, they'd be eliminating wetland, which would be a, a no-no.
Which they did without approval.
Or replacement, right?
So they want this person to go back and re-flag it?
I guess that's what's occurring. According to not us, according to an applicant.
Yeah, in other words, Mr. Maloney's having him do all this work for him.
I don't even know the guy.
I, I wouldn't know him if I took over him. Other than, well, I attended one of your meetings, and he, remember, you, you got, uh, the board had asked him to come in, say, "Hey, what are you doing over there?", it was just a very informal meeting.
Oh, was it, I don't, I don't remember.
It was, it was actually, when, when Mr. Andrews was still, uh...
Yeah, I don't remember what he looks like.
Yeah, he came in, and it was just, "Hey, what are you doing?", you know, we had, there was nothing submitted to a board, or what, we just...
And, and if...
And he said, "I have no tenant", he said, "I'm just making, you know, if, as I recall", but...
Yeah, and if, and if I, my suggestion was that we had a full site plan then, then we wouldn't be going through this now.
Anyway...
I don't have those.
Did you open the, did you open the next meeting?
Um, well, it, it, you're, you're fine, you're fine, you're, we are now listening to, thank you, Bert, we are now listening to, um, Denzel De Souza for 416 Rear Plymouth Street Site Plan Review. Did, did you get these ones? Did we get these, John? Oh, here they are. We don't have that area all done off, and this hasn't been reviewed before, is the problem. I don't know how this is, let me read. No, we're just reading these, um, comments. So the fire department doesn't have any questions as of yet. But we're still looking for waivers on all these things that are still going through conservation, and, and also, so, Rick, on the last page of the site plan checklist, that's the stormwater stuff, correct? Like, all the final contours and all that? Oh, sorry, just the first one. And a waiver on the drainage calculations is on the second page of the site plan checklist? So how will we ever know that we're gonna get these things? Which we need, because it's all different.
On the third page too, it looks like he's requesting waivers for all of that. On page three, no, two of the site plan checklist?
He's, that's, you know, waiver for, uh...
Conservation.
Location of wetland, streams, ponds.
Right. And down below that, location of open space to include existing trees and other vegetations to be retained.
Which one was that, Bert?
Uh, it was the second page, way down at the bottom, on the site plan checklist. The very last paragraph, it says location of open space.
Yeah, he wants a waiver.
He wants waivers on all that, right.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah, yep. Waivers on hydrants, services, area loading, existing structures. Existing and proposed topography. These are all waivers.
Why would you all these, I mean, that's because it's already existing, as far as the...
That's what my next question...
You know, as far as the fire laws.
What is actually being grant, could be grandfathered as pre-existing title zoning, or whatever?
But, but they never rented out that building before, it was only used as maundry pump house, right?
Wasn't it, wasn't it used back in the days, like, uh, what do you call it, a can and bottle return place, weren't they storing stuff in there?
Oh, John might know that.
From the supermarket.
Um, that, that might have been, but it was just storage, like a shed.
That's all, that's all I can remember it as.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I don't remember.
If there was an actual, or if that was a separate business.
I don't think so.
You know, like...
Because otherwise, we would have all frequented it at some point, because how long, you've been here just as long as I've been alive, right? Pretty much. Seventies.
We've been here since... About eighty, so...
Pretty much.
It was used back there, and, yeah, that's all I ever, you know, Hoppy's gas station was out front, and then that building was way in the back, God, this is an old...
Me too. Light poles, recreation area, fencing, screening, that's, there's so many different things that are...
I see a lot of that, isn't it, just because it was already pre-existing, so that's why they want the waivers.
But like Jamie says, if they're increasing the, basically, increasing the, the area to be cleared, then it's not pre-existing, it's, it's what they're...
And that building hasn't been rented out before.
No, it hasn't.
And we have water health plans approved for if they were gonna do anything, but we don't have it all set up, so yes, there's plans in place, but then, what about stormwater management and all of that? Because we haven't gone through any of that. And doesn't conservation have to approve any of that if it's not...
Yeah, but that's stormwater management.
So it goes, yeah, so it goes all the way back to that again.
And, you know, bottom line, I, I would think, that if they were even gonna claim that it was pre-existing, then they have to show, or that, that the changes that they made were not significant changes that would, that would require us another review.
Yes.
And they, and they're...
I would think, unless it's some...
But there has definitely been significant changes.
Especially if they're clearing.
Unfortunately, it's not like I like it to be that way. But I, again, like, we, that's why we need to make sure that everybody does these things in advance, you know, as soon as they start, then it prevents these situations. So are we gonna make, um, I mean, we already made the motion, and so we're just...
For the, for the first application, you'd want a second motion for the separate application.
Say that we just made a motion that makes that the same.
But he's, you know, he's telling them, he won't, he won't put the septic in that building until it's approved by us, well, I mean, it doesn't, I don't see why that would make any difference, you know, if he wants to rent the building, he's gonna have to do it anyway, whether, regardless whether he rents it or somebody else rents it, so I don't understand that, you know...
Logic.
That logic at all to that.
So do you think that we should...
Because it is on that septic plan, you know, it's a proposed tank and everything for that building.
Right. Okay, so, I'm sorry. We're, we're really regretful, though, but this is the, this, I, I think we all are very regretful, am I speaking for everybody by stating that? But it just, it's really out of our hands, because this is what we have to do to, this is what we're elected to do.
So we gotta go back to him and have him, you guys, and have him talk to you guys?
He needs to do a full site plan, and go through all the boards, and have it all approved. Which he can get, we don't need to advertise, so he can get it to us at the next meeting if he has it all, well, he has flagging going on, so it's probably gonna be a, a little bit... Conservation flagging and things like that, and stormwater management study has to be done, and all kinds of stuff.
Could take another six months, it could be...
If he gets on it right away, um, this is gonna be a question for Rick, because, Rick, how long do you think all of that work would take, meaning like, the stormwater, I mean, like, it could take, it depends on the engineer's schedule, or...
I mean, it shouldn't be on the, it should be on the site plan, any, uh, stormwater management, any, you know, it should be on that plan.
Right.
So, I can't see him getting that whole site plan with a septic and everything else, without all that on there too. So, I think, the only thing I see right now is just flagging the wetland, if you've been doing something wrong out there, and conservation has an issue, then...
Do you think that, how long do you think it would take to get the site plan with the stormwater management review, and then get to us?
Depends upon the engine, it, you know, yes.
But it could be done quickly, right?
Well, didn't you say the very least, the next conservation meeting is the 22nd, 3rd?
Somewhere right there. So then, what, at the beginning of October?
And the only other thing is, it, it says here, uh, that the forty-five days is up on 9/18.
So...
So either we, uh, uh, accept an extension, or we vote on this tonight as presented.
I think that we need to do an extension, don't you?
Yep, we'd have to.
I'm sorry, we're, we're stuck by bylaws, it's not... So if you tell the owner that he needs to get the full modified site...
Thirty day, or sixty day, wouldn't you want a thirty day?
Thirty would bring him to the, what, October 18th, which would make it that there would be possible to get a full...
If they had everything done.
Right, but if he gets right on it, like, it is possible that we could get it in, have it reviewed by Amory, and get, and, and, and do it.
Should we then ask for a sixty, just to be sure? If they, they have to agree to it.
I guess, that would probably be a good idea. I would... I would agree with that, I just was hoping, maybe. So sixty's November second.
You think so? I don't think we've ever done thirty days, I just don't think...
How long, how long can these people wait?
Exactly, well, that's the problem, I mean, I, I feel, like, I feel for them.
We're regretful, like, this is hard.
Love to help you out, I, I'd love to, but in, in the same breath, this isn't, this isn't, this isn't the board's fault, this is certainly not your fault, you know? You can only vote on something that's, that's presented in front of us, and, and if it's incomplete, then...
Right.
It's, uh...
I understand.
You gotta put pressure on them, you know, to, to, to provide this information, I would think.
Well, that's, yeah, that's all he kept giving us, because we said we need a full site plan, and, and he sent us one, then he sent us the other.
You can only ask so many times, you know?
Right.
Well, uh, I'll make a motion that...
Sixty day extension?
Do you want to do a sixty day?
Would you give us a sixty day extension?
I don't know if I'm gonna be in business by then.
Well, you can, you can retract it, but it's, it would give it an extension so that we can...
So that you don't have to start all over.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, I can't...
That's okay. Yeah, like, we want to get you right on.
You just sixty days.
It just...
Just gives you that time.
You don't have to wait sixty days.
No, if you get it done tomorrow, you can get on to our next meeting.
So then the next meeting is two weeks again?
Yes. Do you need that in a motion, a motion to, uh, granted the applicant for, uh, the Plymouth Street, Mr. De...
I think we might as well.
To extend a sixty day extension on their application?
I think we should.
If it's, uh, if it's agreeable to the applicant?
Yes.
That the board would, uh, request a, or suggest that a sixty day extension for the application be submitted to the board.
Yep.
Want us...
Do you want a second that?
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm gonna need your signature on this. Joanne, it's right to the, the left, right?
Yeah, because if we didn't, bottom line, we'd have to vote no on it, turn it down, I would think.
Yeah, there you go, a month ago, now they're no better off than they were.
A hundred percent, you know? This isn't anything...
Yeah, but then, he gives them that, which they thought that's all they needed.
Right, these people are caught in the middle, and so is the K-9 guy.
Yeah.
To no, no fault of their own, as far as I can see. I just seem so...
Or it's just me.
Sixty day extension.
Just wait till you get a clock in.
Oh, you got it? Like I said, if we get this done tomorrow, we put them on the next hearing, but it could, don't know it.
Thank you.
Right now, especially.
So we just have to test, uh, overloaded.
Instead, you know...
Something happens in the next two weeks. Right.
So in technicality, we should probably, um, be diligent and have Joanne, um, ask K-9 for another extension too, because they're on nine eighteen, so we should ask them to do a sixty two.
I think they were October something.
Oh, you're correct, sorry, I'm mixing up the dates.
So we should be okay with them?
October four, we'll have a chance, okay.
Thank you.
I mixed up the dates, a lot of dates flying. Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, just, just let us know if we can help. We have bills to pay.
I feel bad for them.
I do too, I...
I feel bad for them.
I literally have a little bit of, so, a little teary sadness about it. Um, okay, so, meeting, I'm sorry, we have bills to pay. Oh, okay. And these were the new, go here, I think I got this right, Joanne, these are revised, and this came out of the K-9. They did. Oh. So, um... Can I have a motion to pay Halifax Planning Board, um, bill to the Plimpton Halifax Express for a renewal subscription? In the amount of twenty-five dollars?
So be it.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting minutes, have everybody reviewed the meeting minutes?
Is there more than just one? No.
Um, we have, oh, hold on. Oh, that, yes, 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 yes. So, oh, so we don't need to vote these ones, we just need to sign them, right?
Do we have to vote, or...
We did this one, this was the one with the, uh, code, the, uh...
Oh, 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 okay.
Okay. And then we have the August fourth, twenty-twenty-two meeting minutes, can I have a motion on these? Has, I, I mean, if you guys need to review them, of course, please, by all means.
The August which one?
Uh, August fourth. Yeah, they are, one, oh, you have some changes?
Uh, it's just a misstatement.
Oh.
No, actually, I think we discussed, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of, uh, August fourth, two thousand twenty-two as, as presented.
All seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry, I just, I didn't see if I can do that? Okay.
Swap.
Swap it out. And then...
Whatever, if you can just flip...
I know, I know, listen. Good, Bert too.
So River Street. I think that's the next thing. Well, we have notices and, uh, letters from a budding towns, but I'm, we, can we discuss the River Street, and then we'll go over the other things? Um, if anything on the, uh, correspondence, or you want to do it the opposite? It doesn't matter to me, honestly, I don't care either, but...
Six one, have that same name?
Yeah.
With the, with the River Street, they, uh, they're going back to the original, what was it? Fence and, or what else do they have to do with, with River Street?
So we approved a plan on River Street, which, then they were at Conservation at the, their last meeting, and they, you remember that road that they said they were gonna leave on the plan?
Oh, yeah, you asked them about that.
Well, at Conservation, it was a turnaround.
Really?
They were presenting a turnaround, and I just happened to be there observing, and, um, I mentioned it to them, and they were a little frustrated, I don't, they said they were gonna come back to us.
Yeah, well, that was, that was a road that went to the field that they're not gonna put in, right?
Well, they still, we're gonna leave it, yeah.
They still want to do the road.
But, but they had, I don't know if I have on my phone, um, I don't think I do, um, do I?
The road is in there now.
So they had a cul-de-sac, turnaround.
There's no road in there now.
No.
I thought there was some kind of dirt.
But it was part of the original plan that was approved to have that road going out to the other side of, uh, uh...
Yes.
You know?
Yes, and we said, uh, you know, we talked about it with them, are you gonna keep going on that? And I, I could totally understand them keeping it going, just to have that out there.
Even for some future use, I believe is what...
Right.
Yeah.
But, um, let me slide into my gallery, and I'll explain, but there was also some other changes on the plan that they presented to the Conservation Board, um, that showed them interfering in the wetlands.
Really?
Yep, and, um, more than what they had stated and showed in our plan. And, um, so afterwards, Grant saw me in the, called me to the hallway, and, and he said, well, what do you think the board? I said, I'm one member of a five-member board, um, so you'd have to come back to us. This is the plan on the Conservation stuff, so, um, it was, that meeting was the twenty-third of August, and that is the turnaround, so that you can see that that's what they presented.
So is that basically, bottom line, it's the same road, there's just a turnaround?
But it's different, and we, and, and so...
I know, but we didn't, that wasn't on...
That wasn't on our plan.
Right.
Would you guys consider, I, I didn't see it, would you consider that a substantial change?
Turnaround, and then changes to...
I'm just throwing it out there, I really don't know.
I would think so. I mean, like, now you're actually creating a big...
And if they're increasing the non-conformity on the, on the, on the Conservation end, then I guess...
I think they'd have to come back, right?
Okay. I'll make a motion that they, uh, come back, uh, River Street and, and re-present any changes to the application that was presented to the Planning Board.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't mind me doing that to anybody, I was just joking.
No, perfect. I, I don't have any problem with that at all, because I think everybody has a thought process.
Yep, there you go.
And I think we're all equal, and it's just like about running it, like, not power, right?
Good one.
Mm-hmm. So I just noted that it needs to come back with changes. They, they made changes to their plan, and so unless they're gonna not show those changes to Conservation, because they did, they showed changes to Conservation. So he didn't tell you about the new plan that he presented to Conservation, I think Conservation sent you it, Deb? It's, we don't want to sign it, my opinion is, do we sign a plan that we approved when we know that changes are being presented to another board?
How do we know those changes are being presented to another board?
I was there, I just showed you a picture of it.
The fact that we already approved it, is that...
I don't know, I think that, I think that we have to have clarification on whether or not they're actually moving forward with, with that plan or not. I don't know.
Well, does, I'll ask you a question, does, does that involve a cease and desist on what we've pre-approved, uh, what we've approved already? I'm just throwing it out there, you don't know.
How about a clarification and, um, a clarification of what they're presenting to other boards, and, um, we, we did get notification from Conservation that they changed their plan.
I would, uh, agree with that, but in the same breath, too, are we suspending any further progress? Changes done to the property until we are brought up to date?
I think so.
So that's what I mean, is it, is it a suspension, is it a, is it a cease and desist, for lack of a better term?
Well, they don't have the plan signed by us yet, so technically, it's not done, I don't know how that would, I mean, this is another...
That's just my, I, I, that's, I'm throwing it out there, I don't know the...
Should we say that we require them to come back in front of us and show us the up-to-date plans? Because we know, we know that, maybe a letter goes to them that says we know that you've sent another, maybe this is how we do it, a le, a letter of not, you know, are you going forward with the plans that you used at Conservation? If so, we retract, I mean, we could vote to retract our approval, maybe? I don't know how, I don't know how that works, I'm just playing it out with you guys.
If, if all...
I don't want to retract it, we know.
If all, all changes to the plans submitted and voted on by the, by the Halifax Planning Board have to be current, up-to-date, and in align with what was approved? Any changes, whether substantial or otherwise, need to be brought in front of the Planning Board again for approval? Something like that.
I would agree with that.
What do you think?
I think so.
Instead of getting, you know, if that way, puts it right out there, you know, if you've changed it or whatever, then you need to resubmit.
We've been made aware that you have, um, a different plan in front of another board, and we need to, before we stamp our votes, something like that. I'd have to hear now what you said again, says...
Rewind it. No, if, if, if any changes have been done to the plans as submitted and approved by the Planning Board, uh, at, at your request, the, the Planning Board has to be notified of these changes in order for the, I changed it completely.
They showed a different plan to Conservation.
Any changes are, are up-to-date, conditions different from those submitted to the, to the Planning Board at the night it was approved, need to be resubmitted and reviewed by the Planning Board before any further action can be taken.
Yeah, I didn't know that, the last thing I knew was we were just waiting to make sure the fence was...
Yeah, that was the only thing, last time, it was, it was the fence issue, that was the biggest problem. But what gauge wire they were gonna use, and now we're...
He knew that, I had a confirmation.
Turns out that that isn't...
Mr. Grant, because I was at Conservation meeting.
They have, well, they withdrew, I think once they found out.
They had...
This, yes, we, we...
Trip was state regulated, and it was, it was, Jim had some, some problems with it, he said that the methods, so...
That, that was a different thing, yeah, that was a different thing. And we didn't have quorum at the last meeting, but Bert and I were sitting here hoping, we knew you weren't coming just for the record.
That plan that you had to show me was in the, in the correspondence, right?
Right, oh, yes, it's in the correspondence, from Conservation.
Yeah, and when, you're out when it comes out, I got the form.
I guess we should have done the correspondence first, right?
In the little, I, I would reference, uh, the change, the date, and that plan, whatever the number is, that was, uh, uh, submitted to the Planning Board by the Conservation, uh, upon the review of their application, shows that, uh, any further changes need to be brought back to the Planning Board.
Agreed. Rick, will you move that, um, second that?
One second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, and just reference that one that you have your thumb on, that shows the turnaround or whatever.
Do you want to take this for, um, to be able to have it, okay. Well, I know, but I just wanted to make it easier for you. You bet. Okay, and then, um, anything else in correspondence besides that?
Where are we in correspondence?
Oh, um, we didn't get, no, all right, hold on. Let me make sure this is what I was thinking. Oh. What's this? This is not what I thought it was.
It'll be August twenty-ninth. This is August twenty-ninth.
Oh, you mean it already happened? Station. Stations, sorry.
Where are we? What else do you need? Where are we going?
I, I was just looking at these, the, I think this is the Conservation, um, Halifax Con, Conservation, um...
Where are you, in other business, or?
Oh, um, yeah, we're in correspondence, we're reading corres, we did other business. We're doing correspondence, if there's anything in there that you want to chat about, sorry, I thought I had already said that.
I don't see anything you want to plug in with.
Um, there is Conservation Commission under the provisions of MGL Chapter 131, Section 40, um, Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. There is a notice of intent by Webby for an applicant, Laura Black, for a proposal to demolish an existing property on 25A Street, so that's probably, that's being a rebuild, so that's, right?
Hanson, Hanson. So if I understand that correctly, we do or we don't need to protect those first letters there regarding the Zone 2 water wells from Hanson and East Bridgewater. Are we all good with that?
So there needs to be an updated map according to East Bridgewater. Um, East Bridgewater is requesting that Halifax have their, um, Aqua4 Protections map updated to reflect what we have in our town that protects theirs.
And then Catherine Hamilton, the Drinking Water Program slash Mass D E P, on page 2, says, "The short answer is no. Municipalities are not subject to protecting neighboring Zone 2s located in their community." It's all, it is called the best effort requirement, I've never even heard of that, and will continue until the Zone 2 is protected, Halifax is considered protecting the Zone 2, encourage the effort of the task information that explains, and then it was responded, uh...
I don't...
Maybe we should redo the map. I thought it was, uh, I thought we had a, an attorney give us an opinion on it or something.
I, I think our map needs to be, um, updated according to what I know, but...
Right. Page 2, there, it's a request to have it updated.
But that's based on a meeting a couple of years ago, but... And then we have, um, what we've already...
August 29th, 2022.
Oh, sorry. I'm way ahead of you, and so I will have to go back to that.
All right. Jonathan Vincent, um, the story from, from Pembroke Middle Road Planning Board, we're good with all of these things?
Oh. This, this notice, um, of public hearing is interesting for Halifax. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, Monday, September 12th, at 7:05 PM, in the Board of Selectments Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall.
Where are you?
For, um... It's not numbered, zero, not a two, three. This is the, um, findings on the Khan Com.
Oh, yeah, there we go. So you're, you're almost to the end of it?
Yep. I'm not down at one. Nope. Yeah, we're looking in correspondence. Yeah, it just started at the end. Hold on, go back.
Yeah, because I thought you, I thought you were in...
Yeah. No, I, no, I don't mean it in that, that way. Yep.
Yep.
So, um, the application by Bruno Sores DeCosta for a special permit for a two-family home located at 22 and 22A, Colby Drive, Halifax, Massachusetts. Said property is owned by Bruno Sores DeCosta. He lives at that address, 22 and 22A Colby Drive, assesses map 34 lot 77. Book and page, um, of the Plymouth County in deeds is, is noted. Anyway, um, the applicant is seeking a special permit to turn an existing in-law apartment into a two-family home for rent. The existing in-law was built predating the Halifax zoning bylaw, Section 167D12, section of use regulations, um, special use regulations, in-law apartment and immediate family member accessory apartment with a separate entrance, gas, electric, and septic. The applicant is not requesting any changes to be made to the apartment area's own residential. Petition 978.
Yeah. That's in that meeting.
Uh, oh, that's the 12th, right?
Well, she came in to discuss it, you know, was, uh, discussing with the board, like, "Okay, what do I do?" So then they told her to put it, submit an application, so this is it.
1677, Ray Cabell, C12. What was the discussion regard, like, regarding? We put in the in-law, lar, and 98?
Yeah, so this predates zoning.
What does this have to do with us? Isn't this zoning?
Yes.
No, I was just...
Well, it's just, it's just a notice, but it was a big discussion as to, I guess, if I understand it correctly, uh, this woman bought the house, but they were claiming that the house with the in-law apartment was built prior to zoning, which was, fits the requirements and the criteria for being grandfathered. So here, this woman bought the place, said, "Okay, what do I do?", and she wanted to make it into a two-family, even though, uh, the previous owners had been coming in front of the zoning board for a special permit to have a immediate family in-law apartment, and then, uh, now they're selling the house, and...
They just bought it.
I don't...
Sold the, the house, it was, they sold a while ago.
It's the Gillis' house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this woman that came in front of the meeting, and was gonna flip the house, and wanted to do some renovations to it, and then sell it as a two-family. So I think that was the big discussion, whether or not where it was pre-existing nonconforming prior to when zoning was, had been initiated, that it's basically grandfathered.
But it's...
But as an in-law, not as a two-family.
Right.
Right.
Right, as an in-law without common space. Okay.
Yes, there's no common space.
Right, it was no connection.
Right.
I grew up two houses down here, yeah.
No shared living space.
I was curious about that one.
Completely separate utilities, if I remember correctly, from...
I don't remember that part.
Which is, which was in direct, uh, conflict with what our in-law apartment bylaw was. They had to be shared living space and, uh, shared utilities, in other words, one meter for both places. Well, they, she came out and said, "There was two separate meters, there's two separate septic systems, it's two separate everything." It's like, where'd this come from?
Yeah, but what about the multifamily? Like, don't they have two acres?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yeah. Okay.
Because that's so convoluted, it's not even funny.
I don't know, it's been treated as an in-law for so long.
Exactly. Should be very interesting to see how that one's gonna play out.
Yeah. And then 920 Plymouth Street, we already had that come in front of us, they're just looking for fencing in front of zoning.
Yeah, antennas, that should be it.
Anything else?
Nope. All good, business, important message, you see...
Well, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Uh, move it.
I'll move it, we're moving.
Bert?
Uh, yes.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Are you sure? Okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.